The college meeting's over. Have Dr. Ask Dr. Easton to give the prayer tonight.
Let's bow here, please. Well, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support as we began this meeting. Fill us with your grace. We ask you to make the decisions that we continue to honor you, to support the staff, faculty, alumni, and the friends of this college. Lord, continue to remind us that all that we do, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of the truth and for the greater glory of you and for the service of humanity. Lord, we ask all these things in your name. And that the old people say?
Amen.
Thank you. Well, what is, do we have any one here that would like to speak? Can you move into the president's report?
Sure. I have a few things I have listed here. As I think probably everybody knows, they're having a retirement reception for me next Friday week, May 5th, from 2:30 to 4 o'clock in the TVCC camp period. Norman, make sure that I said. We have graduation ceremony on May 12th at Athens High School again, their gymnasium arena. We'll have Health Science graduation at 10:00 AM. We'll have the AAS graduation and certificates at 1:00 PM, and we'll have the AA graduation at 4:00 PM. And it's my understanding, we've got the largest number of graduates we've ever had TVCC in the spring semester. I don't know that they have exact number yet. They were somewhere around 800.
Eight hundred and thirty-two was the last number that I heard.
So the last, the last graduation that was larger was 780 or something, 770. So we, one of the good things I think that we're doing is we're graduating students and they're finishing and we're completing. So that's a good thing for us. And I'll be, I'll be at that graduation ceremony and I'll be conducting the ceremony. So I'll be there. I think that'll be the last official duty that I'll have here. But TBCC Annual Foundation Golf Tournament, it's always a great tournament. It's on a Monday, it's a Monday after the, I retire our four-day work week on May 22nd, if you haven't signed up for it, it's really a lot of fun. And then again, it contributes to go to the foundation. The next board meeting, that's up for, we can do whatever. Normally, we do not have a May board meeting. And if you, as a board chairman or anyone decides that we need to have one, we could discuss it. But as of right now, the next board meeting is scheduled for June 26th. And again, something can come up. If it does, we can, you know, we can get together and talk about it. But that's, normally, we do not have a May. I was going to also mention the Mar Foundation. I think if you had a chance to look at my update, which unfortunately I sent late this afternoon to the board trustees, we did get a $500,000 a year for four-year contribution towards a workforce building on the Terrell campus from the Mar Foundation. We've been working with the Mar Foundation for three years. This is the third year that they've contributed to the college. We went to them, asking them for this. This was a request that we made. And so it's really a good opportunity, we believe. Also, they are giving us $125,000 for scholarships for students that are enrolled in the line worker program, the plumbing program, and electrical program on the Terrell campus for the 2023 and 24 school year. They're interested in helping Kaufman County. Basically, they're, they're coming out of Dallas and Dallas area. And they really do. We've developed a great partnership with them, and I hope that they'll continue in the future. I think it could lead to even bigger and better things possibly. Also, I gotta, I gotta mention the rodeo. The rodeo was great, last Friday and Saturday. I know Steve was there Saturday, I was there Friday, but they, they, it takes a lot of effort and time and working together to put that rodeo together, see all the different moving parts. I think they said there was 400 participants. Thirteen schools, I believe, were there. And it was a big crowd Friday and even a bigger crowd Saturday. I gotta, just kudos for our rodeo team, the volunteers that they get to do that, the sponsors. We had a lot of sponsors that helped with it as well. And by the way, it was on the Cowboy and Cowgirl Channel Station, TV, television stations. And apparently, people were watching it because I kept getting texts saying, I see you and see you there. And so I know it was being watched. So we have two of our rodeo team members, Jase and Nikaden, are going to the Casper, Wyoming for the, for the national rodeo event, National Intercollegiate Rodeo Finals, which is on June 11th and 17th. And I want to say something good also about Brent Brad. He's a rodeo coach. He is a great person and a great guy and a great coach. He's been here for fif- this is his fifteenth year. And he's done nothing but bring pride to our program. And I'm proud of him and proud of the team itself. And if you were there, you saw how they were, they are. They're, they're just good students and oftentimes, they move on to the next level. So I want to say something good about that as well. If anybody has any questions about anything, I'd be happy to answer any question.
I have a question regarding bar, $500,000 a year. Is there an expiration date on that? Or do they tell us how quick we had to?
Well, they, it's contingent upon board approval of a building on the campus. And so, you know, that's going to take some time to get that together. That probably is a July board meeting, maybe, maybe an August board meeting. But they, before they start giving the money, they want to make sure that we're going to do something. And so that is contingent upon that. So my, my, my plans are is to meet with Dr. Morrison and meet with Steve and whoever else would like to about that building and then, you know, start the ball rolling. We've already got some plans made. It looks good. We've got cost estimates already that what we think we can work with. And so we're kind of ahead of schedule. We gave all that to the Mar Foundation when we met with them. By the way, we met with them on the Terrell campus. They were so impressed with the campus. We also took them over to the Health Science Center. And they were unbelievably impressed with the Health Science Center. And so I think we've, I think we've got a great partnership there. That was before they decided to give us the $500,000 for years. So I think, I think there's some potential there for the future, but it is contingent, they're not, unless we're going to build it.
And same thing with the the scholarships, $125,000 in scholarships. Is there an expiration on that? Is that, when do we have to start that?
Well, we're starting it in the fall. So it, this, their scholarships will be to help us recruit fall students in the fall for those three programs. And it's for next year, it's for the fall and spring and summer of next year.
Next year?
Well, this, 2023, 24 school year. Yeah, 23. It's a good, it's a good deal as well for us to be able to do that. That's going to pay for a large amount of scholarships for tuition or fees. It probably won't pay for maybe books, but it'll pay for other things that will help us recruit.
On that line program, I think it was $3,500 cost to the student, wasn't it? Before that was not being called for it or something?
It was, it was and is. And if they don't have a program eligible, it's difficult for our, some of our students to come up with that kind of money. So this will, I don't think we've decided exactly how we're going to distribute the scholarship funds. I think they're working on that now. But I think it's, we're going to do it in a way that will be most beneficial for the student.
Yes, probably start in the campus we've already got.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, all three of those programs, two of those programs are redoing the building. And then one of the programs we started this year, we kind of got off to a slow start this year, actually. So we're hoping that next year, we'll get off to a bigger start and we'll have more opportunity with that. And if you drive by the campus, the parking lot, you see the pole, poles up out. Those are the poles that they're using in class.
One other question, the line program, is that can also be in Palestine?
Yes, it will be. As a matter of fact, it's got 20, it had 20 students in it in Palestine. It may have had a couple of drop, but it's full in Palestine. And we, we got a better start for some reason over in Palestine than we did in Terrell. But we believe that this next year in the fall, I hope, I hope, I keep looking at Kelly Downs and back there. But I hope that it's, and with these scholarships, it will help us recruit.
Are you looking at possibly doing two conferences? This has been demanded, that's a large.
Okay.
I have some questions regarding plumbing electrical, but would it be more appropriate to wait till we get down?
We're going to come back. Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. King.
Yep.
As a board, we know that this is going to be maybe your last meeting tonight. And we want, we wanted to give you a card to send it off with.
Thank you so much.
Jerry Stone just got here, so he needs to maybe sign that.
Okay.
We also value something to take with you that you can enjoy on the RV.
I'm not sure about the RV yet. But we're, we're thinking about the RV. Well, thank you so much. Should I go ahead and open?
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I'm like a little kid when I get something like this. I want to open it right now.
You want to?
If he's going to get an RV, it's going to be the big tool.
Well, that's what, that's what people keep telling me. I'm not very mechanical.
When you think about an RV, you learn the two things you never thought you'd learn today, Jerry.
That's why I keep, people keep telling me, I'm not that mechanical. And my wife knows that she, she knows I'm not very mechanical. So it's a little bit of us, of a concern.
It better be, it better be pretty nice, huh?
Thank you.
This was a glad effort from the staff.
Trying to figure out exactly what we got. It looks complicated. I'm not exactly. Think there's something else still in the bottom. Oh, it's a laptop. Thank you so, you know, I was thinking about this the other day. I thought I'm going to have to buy a laptop.
That's for your electronic manual.
Well, thank you so much. I have to get Lottie, I think Lottie back there. Well, thank you, thank you, thank you. I was thinking the other day, I'm going to have to get my laptop back up to somebody. So this, thank you very much. I appreciate this. I'll definitely use it. But I will definitely, 100%.
We thought you were going to zoom these meetings.
From my RV? You know, I'm not going to say anything. I just say thank you very much. This is very helpful.
I'll tell you, already has it all loaded, set up, ready, good and everything.
Well, thank you so much. I think, thank you, thank, thank you, Norman. Thank you, I appreciate it really very much. Again, I was thinking about this the other day. I was going to talk to Lottie or somebody and try to figure out what to buy for now on May 31st. So thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you. I'll put it over here. Get it ready, go. Thank you, King. And thanks for the card.
All right. Next on the agenda is to consider the minutes of the March 31st and April 3rd meet, board meetings, where these were sent out in your package. Do y'all have, hear a motion to approve?
All second.
Second, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay. Consider business and financial and investment report for February 2023.
We're not, not a lot of changes. February, most of the spring semester revenue has been afforded. We're still at 1.85% of ahead of our tuition fees. Most of your other housing, goods service bookstore is up slightly. Some of those will think enough to get in the summer, particularly bookstore. We did make another half million dollars in adware taxes, March 21, 539. Kind of as a side note, there's a lot of stuff in the legislature about property taxes. Plenty of time to talk about that in the budget. The only other thing under expenses. And you guys that work in a budget committee, the scholarships are up, but that's, that's not really a surprise with soccer scholarships and then the increases in the board, both on the revenue side and courses with the scholarship, but that runs your expenses up. As of March, we're still 14.1 billion revenue over expense. Whereas now, y'all heard me say before, most of our revenue is in as far as tuition fees and property taxes. So we'll have some in the summer. But that will, that number will dwindle, of course, in summer. The next page on cash, we got a couple items on cash tonight. You notice the cash position is, is up finally, this is the month, as you recall, I believe it was another six million, we moved into cap reserve. So cap reserve now stands at 29.7 billion. There's the rest of your operating cash there. On your investment report, I want to pause on that one, the next page. Stephanie and I are well aware that there's $8 million in the bank account. Later on on the agenda, we have an item to deal with investing that money. We have some more money coming due in May. That would be one of the reasons we did this now. Next page is your cap reserve activity. We don't, I have a lot of projects going on now. We've had a lot of discussion, a lot of things y'all were talking about. Last page is the over 25,000. Want to see if anybody had any questions on any of those. Like I said, we have not approved, now that you didn't talk about cash. Steve, that's on.
Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the financial reports?
So someone.
Ryan, lady first, and Jerry second. All in favor? All right, next item is to consider and discuss a TBCC board trustee advisory committee to the president. This is a new committee that we've talked about. I've had several conversations with Dr. King and and Dr. Morrison about this, whereby the trustees can have a a chance to visit with the president, other than this forum, to have some ideas back and forth between them to, just to become a little more familiar with, well, from Dr. Morrison's standpoint, operations here. Also, we can hear a little bit more about how it might, we could assist him or we can talk about things that may be on the, in the planning stages. It's not meant to usurp the board and the authority. It's just to have a better communications between the president and the board. And we could have more interaction with, with that position. Do I hear a motion to approve this committee?
Make that motion.
Motion made by trustee Henry, seconded by trustee Easton. All in favor? Motion caring. All right, consider and discuss Kaufman County Resource Connection Request for Office Space at TBCC Kaufman Center.
Well, we, we, we've talked about this for several meetings. And Pam Quarter is here, Pam, raise your hand. We've been meeting with Pam now for, I guess, four or five months about this. And also Susan Huffman, Susan, dear, okay. Susan represents the hospital. And so we've been meeting with them on a regular basis. We, the last meeting we had, we, we talked about this and I gave you all of the individuals and other, other types, other nonprofits and other entities that were supporting. And you had, we had a group of supporting letters about that thing. And they're coming from the county, the cities, the schools, and, and the hospital itself. The hospital itself believes this is a great partnership. And they're very much in favor of moving forward with it. And as we've talked about before, I won't go into details, you probably know what we're talking about. But this would be the second floor where the offices are of the building. It's 17% of the building, we calculated that. We did go through and we looked, I think I was asked at the last board meetings to determine the, the, the cost of 17% of operations of building. And it looks like the annual maintenance cost is about $18,755. The pre-COVID average utility cost was $23,500. So 17% of that was $3,100 annually for utilities. And then we also added the a security officer, a police officer. We knew that that was going to need to take place. And so 17% of that we calculated in as well. I think the overall reimbursement is really what it is to the college would be somewhere around $15,853 annually. And I think Pam has talked to some others about that and that they're agreeable, that that's something that can, they can do. And so right now, we're working with their attorney, the, the hospital's attorney, and also LEAP order to work up some sort of an agreement, some sort of a lease agreement or whatever they could do to make this work. Again, I just think this is going to be a great opportunity for TBCC to work with the Kaufman community, the Kaufman County community. And I have felt in a way for the last two or three years since we moved out of the Kaufman facility that we needed to do more, this will give us an opportunity to do more with the community. I think it will, it will show support, the college's support and partnership with the, with these nonprofits to be able to, to, to work in the, in the, in the tradie valley community college campus. But Pam, do you have anything you'd like to add to that or?
Well, I just, thank you for the opportunity. And I'd like to just kind of explain what we've been doing so far. We've actually been able to host some meeting programs. And most recently, we were able to host Kaufman County in the city school districts. The nurses and the SROs, we had six seats in attendance in two days. And we were talking about the fentanyl. It was a fentanyl awareness class and they were, they were able to learn about Narcan and the signs of what for in a child that might be, you know, abusing, so things like that. So the group that I work with will meet this Thursday. But we just, when we get together, we're sharing the information that we have. But we just want to help the community. That is what we want to do. And so that would be a one-stop shop, as Dr. King has said, that we could send people to. People are hurting all over our community. And, and we're hoping that if this partnership does work, that we can help other communities create something that's worth for you.
We, the, as I mentioned earlier, their attorney and Lee are working his details out. One of the details, I think the financial impact, you know, we pretty much got down. The, the length of time is something that we talked about. We talked about at least a two-year, potentially with an annual renewal after two years. We do not believe that that facility, that part of the facility is going to be used in the near future. The only way it could be used is if you, if you tore out all the offices and completely did a renovation. And we don't see that kind of, of a need in the near future. So we believe this is just an opportunity for them to be able to use a building and help the Kaufman community, Kaufman County. So what I would like to be able to do, you can, you can tonight, if you, if you would like to, you can approve this with contingent upon Lee and their attorney working through the details. And then I would also have, like to have the authority to sign that. Also contingent upon the president of the board approval as well. So if you're willing to move forward with that, then we can do that between now and the June board meeting. If not, we'd have to wait for the June board meeting to be able to get this done. So it's up to you to make that decision. But if you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer anything you might have. As I mentioned, the hospital has been very much involved in this process. They're totally in favor of us doing it. And that's a good thing as well. As you know, the hospital owns the building. And so it's, it's, that's why we're working with their attorney to get this worked out. So if you would be in favor of approving, approving it contingent upon the attorneys working through the details and Steve's approval, board chairman's approval, then we could go forward with it and, and do what we need to do and report back to you at the June board.
Do you hear a motion or any discussion?
Let me just make one comment.
Okay.
I'm totally supportive of this. Only concern just a little bit is what it really costs to operate a building. If it hasn't been operated, you know, utility rates, I don't know what's going to happen. There probably needs to be some ability to capture 70% of the cost. If it's different than this.
Okay.
We just need to think about that in our, in our document things.
Okay.
But totally supportive of it. I just wonder if we've got it all.
Okay.
And then this, we'll have the ability to understand that, that's flexibility.
Okay.
If we need to.
Yeah, I agree.
And capital expenses for like roof repairs or leaks or something of that nature, is that already covered in our lease with the hospital?
Yeah.
Did we pay for it or?
We paid for it.
Fifty-year lease, I mean.
Yeah. Well, actually, we signed a new lease a few years ago. We got like, yeah, 40 left. Dr. Ford, he signed the lease before he left, so.
And we got, we had 40 years, we're paying for it. But just, we just need our percentage of cost, whatever it is, because this could all change.
Okay.
It'll be different when you're operating it.
Okay.
Do we have a security option there now?
No, we do not. So this would be an addition.
Right, so that's the cost, they pay all of?
They're going to pay 17%.
I understand that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
But we're not paying one at all now.
Right.
And so now it's going to be a situation where you're going to have one that you didn't have to pay at all. And we're only charging 17% of it. And I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I just don't understand.
Okay.
Any other discussion, comments?
I, I just have a comment. Some of the things that I see on daily, it is, it's very much needed, and I'm just speaking in terms of just one community. And it varies from day to day. And this is something that I would recommend 110%. And I see things from our community that we are lacking and we're turning situations away because the needs are so dear. And whatever financially we need to try to figure out if it's just saving one.
It's worth it. Totally supportive.
I, I have a little setting each morning that I call the gathering, the morning gathering, safe space. And I would say 15 to 20 students show up every morning having different types of things just to sit and talk. And they may not feel comfortable going to our council or whatever, but they may feel comfortable talking to their friends. But my safe space gives them an opportunity to say, hey, Dr. Easton, here's what, I'm not getting along with dad, I'm not getting along with whatever, but it's a safe space. But that service is, is, is needed. Now, I'm just speaking in terms of one community, but there, when you, when you look at Kaufman County, if it's happening on my campus, I have to say that it's probably all around us. And we're not meeting those needs. And, and I think COVID probably done a lot of things to some of the students that we're dealing with today. But I would echo, let's, let's try to figure that out.
One other question. Uh, one other question I have, uh, as far as the remainder, as far as the building, if we had a program, we'd want to need a location there for, for a workforce program or something in conjunction with what's been done there with, with this. Is there a way to have separate ingress and egress in there and the way it's can be divided, you know?
Yeah. Now, there's two big, uh, classrooms across the hall from these offices. These offices are all in one area. There's like ten of them, I believe. And then across the hall completely is two classrooms, that we can still use those classrooms and wouldn't.
Right. So we, we're not?
We're not taking away anything. And we're not using these classrooms.
Anybody else have any comments? Or, or do we hear a motion to, um, prove this subject to, um, attorney approval and, and, uh, board approval of, of the legal document and lease?
Your approval.
My approval.
Mine.
I'll make that push.
Do you hear a second? Like these seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I think that's going to make a difference. I really do. Truly agree. Thank you, Pam, for being here tonight. She's been very faithful and she's willing to get this thing going. And I believe with her support, it will, she will make a difference in the Kaufman community. I don't think there's any question about that. She will. Thank you. Thank you, Pam. Okay.
Next item on the agenda is to discuss the fire suppression and sprinkler system at Northwest Dawn.
Okay, we're back on this one, back on this again. Uh, we, we did a little research. Um, we provided some of that research to you and, and the board information. Um, you know, I think it's just, we just need to have an open discussion whether or not we want to do the, um, the sprinkler system or, or if we want to, um, you know, leave like it is or what. So I guess I just opened, opened it up.
And to get full perspective, we have two bids here, but also, uh, the, the general gist of this is to be able to get this put in. Would it be during the summer?
It would be. Yeah, this summer.
For the football team?
When the football team comes and after they leave in the spring.
Okay. We hear these, this, this discussion on, on this item. Here, none. Do we hear a motion? Followed with a, with a motion. So, yeah, the, the motion by Rusty Stone to go ahead and approve this, uh, contract that, uh, Dale sent out as part of our suppression means, uh, pretty high.
I have a question. This would be approving the sprinkler system from the number two to one hundred and seventy-one thousand. I'll second that motion.
I'm going to second it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Like, like sign to no. Motion carries. All right, see you. Consider and discuss purchasing constructional equipment for the Terrell campus plumbing and electrical programs.
These are the programs that we were talking about earlier, the electrical and plumbing. The renovation is underway currently on the Terrell campus. Get, get a chance to drive by there. We'll be happy to show you what we're doing. Uh, they're making progress. It looks good. It will be good. Um, as we talked about before, I guess it was a couple of meetings ago, Terrell Economic Development Corporation is providing funds for this, but these funds that we're talking about here are, um, a grant fund. We, we received a grant for two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars back last year. And so we're asking to approve tonight uh, the bid for the equipment for these two, both of these programs. And, uh, we've evaluated, I think we have a committee that's looked over this. They're, they're, they're very comfortable with, um, tech labs. Tech Labs is a hundred and which one was that? Hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. They're all pretty close. But Tech Labs also including, uh, student curriculum modules. And, uh, we will just believe that curriculum piece is going to, it does make a difference for us and for our students. And so I, I'll reiterate, this is grant funding, but the board needs to approve it because it obviously is uh, equipment that's over fifty thousand. But, um, our recommendation, uh, and we've met many times on this, and we've actually met on the Terrell campus. Uh, and actually you met, they met with the, uh, company Tech Labs. And Tech Labs was there and they went through and measured things and, uh, tried to make a determination on, on what needed to go where and et cetera. So we would ask for approval of Tech Labs for a hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Now, do you have any questions?
I do have.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. I, I would assume since we're buying this equipment now that uh, we're going to start this program soon.
We're going to start it in the fall.
It was my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, when we discussed this originally, we were going to start this in the fall of twenty twenty-four.
Not that I'm aware of. I could be wrong. I think the grant required it to be done by fall of twenty twenty-three.
Uh, my concern is are we ready to start these two programs?
We've been talking a lot about that. We have, believe. Uh, as a matter of fact, we had a meeting, what was it, last week to make sure that everything is in set to go. Curriculum, equipment, this is the equipment. The renovation of the facility will be ready. It will be ready. Now, can I guarantee that there's going to be twenty students in each, each one of these? I can't, but maybe they can.
We, we feel as though we're doing everything that we need to do in terms of advertising and marketing programs. The scholarships are going to be very helpful in terms of making sure that students are in here, but we've looked at, uh, through our target students, students of this program and we feel as though the, the target audience is going to be there. And we've always talked about fall twenty-three for these programs, uh, starting and with the grant, it was required that we have all twenty-three. We have submitted everything to, um, cohort and have approvals through cohort. We've submitted to SAT C O C and right now we're waiting on, uh, our approvals. So when you see the, the marketing go out, you'll see the statement at the bottom that says pending SAT C O C approval. Our biggest problem that happened to us with the line worker program was, um, the lack of the ability to find an instructor. And so we have, we've already started that process of, of looking. We have just about everybody that we know where I, I have personal contacts of, from my family in, in the construction industry that we, we've reached out to and we've already started that process so that hopefully we can get somebody hired much sooner. And we won't find ourselves in any situation that we have a problem with, with that.
Is, is Pell ready on this?
Um, so what we have to do, once we, once we receive approval from SAT C O C, we then have to turn around and submit to Department of Ed. So at this time, I can't say that, that we will have, that these will be all for Pell because we don't know if we'll be, if we'll receive the Department of Ed approval in time for our fall semester, which is why the scholarships was so important to us to be able to start the program.
And have we started marketing on this?
So we, we met, um, last Tuesday or Wednesday and approved the, uh, marketing campaigns. Joanne Fritz, our marketing director, she put some finishing touches on it. I saw him come back in today, so we're ready to hit that button. And we're, by the way, uh, Courtney, um, Courtney Souths, um, she's been in our meeting with us. So she's, she's on board with talking to the high schools, the graduating seniors, Mary Nellie Camp, who's our dual credit director. She's been in our meetings to help us, um, in terms of dual credit recruiting. Gray, right here? Right. Gray's part of this too. Um, cause one of the, you want to talk a little bit about the Hispanic initiative and the
So there's a strong, um, interest coming from the Latino community and they have a very strong interest specifically within both plumbing and electric. So we, we may request to not only take those, they require to distribute to the communities, but also, uh, translate them into Spanish as well, so that we can even recruit even more all around here.
If, uh, I've got one question. If, if the classes don't make or either we don't get accreditation from Saksy right away, or if we don't find an instructor, is there, and we, if we've spent this money, is there any sort of penalty that we would get if it doesn't kick off in, in the fall?
So the, the equipment that we purchase with the grant would be ours to, to use. We actually have until January, uh, twenty-four to finalize and, and have everything with the grant. And the other portion of this is going toward, um, faculty salary. So if we didn't utilize that, then we would have to return that money to the, to D W C.
And do you, have you checked the money that's being provided? Is it adequate enough to attract people that would be willing to teach this?
We honestly, um, no, sir. Uh, yes, we've checked. We, we are concerned, um, because these people in the industry, they, they make more money than what we could offer them. So what we're looking at, and we talked about this a little bit last week, what we're looking at is, um, trying to come up with, uh, being flexible with this to where what their normal workday would look like would be a little bit different so that they could still run their business or you know, work some hours in the field, et cetera. And we feel as we can be flexible with that, that we'll be able to attract uh, better candidates.
Uh, and would this program be able to be used with dual credit?
Yes, sir. Ho- however, we don't feel as though the dual credit population really is our target population here because the amount of hours that they would have to spend on the Terrell campus away from their high school is significant. And for, for a high school student, it's hard for them to miss that many credits and when they're out of the high school to do that. And the one, only way they could do that is if they took some of their high school credits in an online format. And, um, it, that's hard for the high school, high schools to work that out.
Is there any problem when you have high school kids coming in with folks that are over twenty-one years old taking these, uh, the classes? I mean, is there, do we need to segregate that anyway?
No, sir. We, we currently have programs that are integrated. They have, with our, any dual credit student that signs up, they, there's a form that they sign and their parents sign understanding that, that they're in college classes and, and everything.
I have one just final comment or final comment for me. I do have a concern uh, that we're rushing this program, these programs, and I'm all hundred percent for them. I want them. My concern is that we're rushing them and we don't need a replay of what we experienced in the past with rushing a program together. And that's, that's where my concern is right there.
And I, and like I said earlier, we learned hard lessons from the line worker program. And we, we have been needing, um, every other, I'm including, I'm even making one of the suit, every, every other week now for about six months, um, working through the details and everything. So we're, we're doing our due diligence to make sure that we're ready.
Your concern was my concern. And that's why I've been involved in some of the meetings lately, just to make sure that they're getting things details worked out so that they don't have the experience they had with the line worker program in Terrell. Line worker program in Palestine was great. They had nineteen or twenty students, but it was terrible that they didn't have students for the line worker program. And I think they learned some lessons from it.
I think Steve's made a wonderful point on, uh, hiring somebody for this position. What's going to happen if you don't get them? What's the, uh?
What's the backup plan?
What's the backup?
So the backup plan, if we can't hire a full-time instructor, is to look at part-time to teach the classes. We know that that's not the best scenario to go with an adjunct instructor. Not to say anything against our adjunct instructors, they're, they've got some really great adjuncts. But the commitment to the, to the program is different if, if you're an adjunct versus a full-time. So we really want to be able to look at a full-time person, but if not, we will look at an adjunct for that. If we still can't find an adjunct teaching these programs, then we would have to look at it the light start again. And we don't want to do it. Which is why we're starting now with the recruiting. And I actually haven't checked with, um, with Hannah, have you checked with the?
No.
But I know, I know from talking with, with several people, there's interest.
Nobody's, nobody's applied?
We don't have any by that.
How long has this been out?
Um, about three weeks.
About three weeks.
We, how, how are we marketing that? Are we just putting it on our website? Are we going to the high school?
So that's the problem is right now we're, we're advertising it on our website, uh, which is not where these people that we're, that we're meeting in terms of for the, for this position are going to look. So we're having to go out to the companies and asking companies to help us recruit an instructor. So, but I have a personal family friend that owns a, owns a plumbing company unit. So I mean, I reached out to him and of course he's not interested, but, uh, you know, it might help me find somebody. So he's reaching out to his contacts. I know that pretty much all of us are doing.
In the, in the, your calculations of, of this program and in, 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 in the other ones too, uh, do you take it all the way through the, what's the financial benefit to the college? If we have the projected twenty people, I mean, are we, are we breaking even or we, or how, 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 and we?
Yeah, we, we provided that for you guys back when we got you to approve the program. And we're, we're, we're obviously doing better with breaking even. We can provide it to you again if you need it. But we did, you know, y'all, you guys approved this program seven or eight months ago. And y'all had it today.
I'm just testing it to approve this based on too many if's here. If we get an instructor, if we get Pell approved, I, I, I'm having some issues.
Let me tell you, if you don't approve it tonight, then you won't have it ready. Because you've got to approve it tonight to have it ready.
We won't have it ready August.
Right.
You've got to get the equipment.
If you don't approve it, then you, you will, will not have it ready for autumn. And so
this is a new program, so we obviously won't have folks on board that you can reach out and touch and say, okay, we're going to plant you in this program this morning. So in, in that sense, it is different than any other brand-new program startup. In other words, aren't these risks that you either accept? And do everything you possibly can diligently to manage against the risk that's pointed out, which is, I get it. But how can you possibly avoid that risk short of doing nothing?
And that's honestly, um, I, I wish I could sit here and guarantee that we're going to be able to, to have, to hire the right instructor, that we're going to have full programs. I feel confident that we are going to have full programs. I feel confident that, um, you know, there, we, y'all have, maybe I should point that out, but and ordering by yellow approval is not, that's making the order tomorrow. Then, you know, we'll have some, we'll have the equipment start coming in in August. Um, you know, we could end up with a, a delay in terms of the equipment coming in. But we ha- we already have on our end how we're going to handle that with the curriculum side of it.
Do you have reasonably high confidence that you and your and with the instructor in place and can receive the, the required approvals? You know, should achieve the targeted fall.
Correct. I feel very confident that SAT C O C, uh, approval will happen. Um, we, we've done our due diligence in the application process. The typically the only reason they would deny it is if you can't prove that there's a need for the programs. And I don't think there's any arguing the need of these two programs. So SAT C O C approval will happen. It's just the timing of how that happens. Um, unfortunately, there's nothing we can do about the fact that they approve it in June, at their June board meeting. But I feel very confident in the fact that, and it's not just the instruction team, it's, it's a team across all departments that have been working together on this. So yes, sir, I do feel as though we've done everything. And again, I, I'm sitting here saying we, we learned lessons last year from the line worker program, lessons that we do not want to repeat.
Uh, Mr. Sheriff, I believe you're for program.
Right, thank you. Do you hear a second? Dr. Easton, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, item number ten, consider and discuss three location options, options for the Palestine campus multipurpose building.
Okay, I know we talked about this in our last meeting and we did approve going to the, to the, uh, uh, the campus in Palestine as a location to put T B C J. as a location to put T D C J, uh, uh, in-service, pre-service and officer training program. Um, we did look at three options last time we were here. Uh, we provided you three options. I, I gave you, uh, in this memo, uh, some of the advantages and disadvantages of each option. I've got Corey Brinkford here with us tonight. He's our engineer and he's been working with us on this. Uh, I've got Sam Hurley here. I've got Tony Buford here. I've got Dre here. I've got Kristen here. All of these people have been working on this over the last few months, several months. And so, uh, there, um, I think it's, it, I think, at least, y'all speak up please. But I think it's the consensus based on these advantages and disadvantages that the option number two was what, what we considered as a committee to be the best option. Also, T D C J, uh, Major Vanderton considered that also to be the best option. Again, I mean, option three is good. Option one, I think has probably some issues that we had difficult overcoming because of the, the topography, but op- option two is the one that we, we believe would be probably overall, there's, there's some disadvantages, but overall it would have the best. Now, Corey, your turn.
Yes, sir. Uh, reiterate what Dr. King said. I think we've spent probably since October actually analyzing, one, the campus, different locations and with Dre talking to the major and all that too. So it's been a really, really extensive research project to figure out where one, accommodate T D C J. Two, where is convenient for T V C C? And the build, buildability standpoint, but a pedestrian flow standpoint, traffic flow standpoint, utility wise and drainage and all that. So we arrived here, it's cost us, which are relatively, they all are good building sites, get all the different advantage, disadvantages. However, I agree option two does stand out, uh, because you're so close to Calhoun. Calhoun is pretty much like a, a center for what their flow for their traffic for the pedestrians would be. And so that's kind of where we landed on it. There's a little, a couple hundred thousand dollars difference between option one and option two. We actually started with option. And then at the direction of Dr. King, he told us to go out and keep thinking, look at the site more in depth. And that's where we wound up with all three options and we did a feature. And we finally, after much discussion and many meetings over the past two months, we concluded option two would be the best site.
I know Dr. Hurley seemed very much involved in this. Dr. Hurley, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, I know we've put a lot of research on him into this. And after our due diligence, number of meetings, like Corey said, I think we agree the general consensus is option two would be the best all round. I think it'll make the needs of, uh, where they will start this program. The Calhoun building would be there in a straight pub. And I think having a facility right there in area that also topographically looks more positive. I agree that option two would be the best all round size.
Dr. Johnson? It's your turn.
Well, originally, I, originally I did prefer option one, um, when we first started, but I, I also looked at option, both options two and three. Three would be a, a little advantageous because of not only the parking, but also being very close to the power lines that are located very close to it as well. And so therefore looking at option two, which is as far as its proximity to, uh, the parking lot as well as Calhoun, that would probably be the best option.
Um, yeah, again, we, we're here to answer any questions that anybody may, may have. I, I did provide you a calendar. And the reason that we're talking about it tonight is because we, you really need to get started working on this. And in order for Corey to start working, he needs, we need to make a decision which option would, would, would be the one that we would prefer. And so, uh, yeah, if you look at your calendar, our, your goal will be to be in, in this building by, um, I think it was by, uh, November, yeah, November, uh, twenty twenty-four. And the, we have to be out of the, the, the leased facility by January the twenty-first of twenty twenty-five. So, um, yeah, you know, we need to go ahead and get started working on, on this and getting that initial work done now rather than wait till the June meeting. Waiting for the June meeting would really put us in a little bit of a hole in terms of, you know, getting these dates and doing the things that we need to do. So that's the reason why we're bringing it up tonight instead of waiting, uh, waiting on that. But we'd be happy to answer any questions. These guys have been working on it. They've done a good job. I think just moving forward, what's the best? Yeah, I'd like to put them in the form of a motion, okay? That we, um, based on the committee's research that followed their recommendation, choose option number two.
You have a second? Any discussion? Uh, Dr. Day, seconded. Any discussion? You're in all in favor?
Okay.
All opposed?
Again, I want to thank the committee. The, the work is just beginning. It's just beginning, but I want to thank the, all those people that have been working on this for several months. And again, I, I'm gonna go have lunch next week with the Palestinian Economic, uh, Executive Director and make sure that I pay for it, uh, because, uh, you know, that he's the one that got us, got us going with this. And his one point two five million dollars kind of got us over the fuck with it, so.
But you're, one other question. We are, the, the parking lot sizes are, are adequate across the board, but we are adding that new entrance on, 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 on the north side of our lot.
We do have room for expansion, Steve, to the north of the existing parking lot. And any earthwork that we have that's excess will be dumped and processed there in place. So when the time comes, as your campus expands or this building expands or option one or two come into play, you can use that money that was already spent on that dirtwork, you can build on top of that too. So it's not just wasted. It's gonna go to a possible expansion apartment.
And there's Does this include redoing the parking lot?
Yes, sir, the parking lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. This is gonna be a good opportunity for T V C C in the future.
Good. Item, item number eleven. Let's see, consider and discuss two bank deposit or relationship.
Uh, board, as, as I mentioned before, uh, Stephanie and I, your investment officer agreed. I convinced the board that the Public Funds Investment Act provided me with a little quicker in getting bids. She agreed. So what we did is we contacted, we tried to contact ten banks. I think we got over six and sent out a bids, uh, solicited, uh, money market CD rates. Um, what we, what we're asking for is authorization because the banks are looking for this in minutes. Uh, we're gonna do business with Simmons. Uh, they have the best CD rates and, uh, Texas Bank and Trust uh, has a money market that's gonna pay four point five percent. We feel like we're operating money, uh, that's the best place for us to park it. That money needs to be a little more liquid and kept reserved. And so what we're asking is the board authorize us to execute those depository agreements since we have not done business with them before. Uh, that's required for their treasury departments.
What, what was the CD rate again?
Uh, the CD rate that we're gonna use, uh, is the seater's rate, the six month, uh, is four point eight one percent. The rates range from, um, four point six two to four point eight one, depending on the term. Uh, so very good rates. These are different programs than we use with four seaters. And I C S, we had to do a little, uh, checking because this money is not, uh, backed up by, uh, pledge securities. These programs, they put the money in different banks, but no more than two hundred and fifty thousand. And our concern was, okay, well, how do we keep up with that? Apparently there is a, a company that handles both these programs. And based on our tax ID, they make sure that no bank has one of the two hundred and fifty thousand. And I think it's, uh, they, I guess it's better, it's probably cheaper for the bank. You know, and so I don't, you know, I don't know why, you know, I asked these banks before, we never said we wouldn't take this, but I had to confirm it before. It is allowed under the Public Funds Investment Act. These are specifically authorized investments under the Public Fund Investment Act. So, uh, we're, we're very pleased to be able to get a little more, buy money on the, for we.
Any other questions?
How long are they guaranteed the money market rate? Uh, that I don't know. Steph, did they say?
They did not specify it is variable, but, uh, they did not give a, a brand or which.
This is in the, the, what they call I C S, is the same deal as the seaters. They deposited, but, uh, but again, it's, it's better than what we can get. It's fine. You just I'm, I'm trying to figure out how much of this is teaser rate, but. Well, you know what you want to. So the good thing is all these banks that we already have existing relationships with, I can move the money. It's just when we did that, yeah. I was surprised by that. Pretty, pretty high rate. They have a seven, two, three, Texas Bank and Trust, uh, Terrill. Coming back some loan.
Wait, is this a fixed rate for six months or variable rate?
The CD is a fixed rate decision. And we have more money coming due in May, uh, so we'll, the next round will probably be later moving forward. But, uh, that was, the six month rate was the highest rate. And so we should have had more money coming due tonight.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion to approve, uh, affected bank and trust? A motion made in second. All in favor?
Right.
Anything opposed? Well, item number twelve, consider and discuss personnel updates.
Again, this is, this is standard update. We had a couple of resignations, retirements. Uh, or resignations, I guess, uh, determinations. And the new hires were just people that we were hiring to replace others, not new people. Um, and one was grant funded for a new position paid for by grant with an understanding that when the grant's gone and that, uh, funding will no longer be available and they won't have a, have that position. So if you just, anybody have any questions about this? There's not as many now as it has been in the past, so that's, that's a good thing. Usually December, usually your January meeting, you have a bunch that's leaving after the fall, but this is not too bad.
Uh, here's a motion to approve the personnel report. Dr. Easton making a motion. Custody, one day, seconds. All in favor?
Right.
Uh, Dr. Charlie?
Yeah, I'm gonna look at the way it generates.
Second?
I second it. Let me say something first. I woke up this morning in Madison, Wisconsin.
Wow.
I get a prize for coming to the phone.
Was it, was it cold in Madison, Wisconsin this morning? It was cold here.
It was snowing and cold.
Oh, okay. Wow.
Well, that will be reflected.
Thank you, thank you, board, for the gift. I appreciate it very much. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you for the gift. Thank you. Thank you, board. Thank you.